I'd like to, thank you. I'd like to welcome you to today's meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. It is August 7, 2025. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. We will start today's meeting by asking the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Commissioner Hanslick, here via Zoom.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
I'm here. All are present. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you could all join me in checking your cellphones, any other noise-making devices you may have brought here today, and check that it has turned to silent or turned off, we sure appreciate your cooperation. We're going to start today with a presentation from Tony Barron. Tony Barron is the Director of our Department of Facilities, but today is in his role for the Feed the Need Campaign. Mr. Barron, it sounds like you've got some more words to hand out.
I do. Thank you very much, Chairman Kelly and Commissioners. My name is Tony Barron, as mentioned, and it has been a pleasure to serve the employees of Johnson County as the Chair of the Feed the Need Campaign, which is one of three charities within the Johnson County Charitable Foundation. Since 1987, employees of Johnson County Government have participated in the annual Feed the Need Campaign. All donations of food and money benefit 10 area food pantries, serving eligible Johnson County residents. Throughout the year, employees from different county departments and agencies sponsor fundraising events ranging from food drives and bake sales to golf tournaments. Most months, representatives from all departments come together to plan for events and discuss current and future successes and challenges of the campaign. I'd like to express my thanks to those department representatives who make our monthly meeting a priority. This year's campaign, with food and financial donations combined, the Feed the Need Campaign was able to provide over 284,000 pounds of food to eligible Johnson County residents. This is 64,000 pounds better than last year, but the committee understands the demands are continuing to increase. With that being said, I'd like to announce the department winners in the following three categories. First up, I'd like to announce the Chairman's Award, which is the most donations. This year, that award goes to Corrections. Next award, which is the Commissioners' Award, which is most donations per employee, also goes to Corrections. And finally, the Rick Beckwith Award, excuse me, the Rick Beckwith Cup, which is the most improved from previous year, goes to wastewater. Thank you, Johnson County employees and Commissioners, for participating in this year's campaign. Next year, we're looking forward to another successful year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron. Congratulations to our winners, and thank you for everybody throughout the county who participated. We'll move on at this time to our public comment portion of the agenda. It's an opportunity for those who wish to speak on general county matters that do not appear on today's agenda to do so. If you do wish to speak on an action item on today's agenda, we do ask that you register with that particular action item. When you do come to the dais, we ask that you state your name and the community in which you reside, and we limit the comments to two minutes. There's a clock on either side of the dais that'll assist you with that time period. If you happen to go beyond that time period, I will ask that you conclude your comments. If you do speak during public comment, we do ask that you refrain from remarks that are personally offensive, impertinent, or profane, or slanderous, and refrain from the use of offensive or intercourse language that would insult or demean any person. If we stray into that kind of public comment, we will provide a warning. If it continues, we'll ask that you step aside from the dais. We do allow public comments virtually, so I'll ask the clerk to let me know when I can call in the virtual public commenter. Okay. The virtual public commenter today is Cassie Woolworth.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Fantastic. My name is Cassie Woolworth, 306 North Pinion, Alata, Kansas. Been here before. The reason I'm calling today is I want to say first and foremost, I really appreciate living in Johnson County. We have made it a very welcoming county, and it has been absolutely fabulous to see the growth in the 40-plus years I've been here. I am going to bring my concern about Melanie Aroro, Congresswoman Aroros, handling because of a racist report that she might not be a citizen. That's atrocious. I understand you have issues, but calling into question a congressperson's citizenship is a serious breach. They would have already had this and haggled it out before she even won office. I can't believe we're dealing with the reports of "show me your papers." And moving on from that, because of course, that then begets the raid at El Toro Loco. And I'm saying raid because it was raid. They went there for restaurant issues, and then they kidnapped people. I am grateful Lenexa Police stayed out of it. They don't need to waste their resources, their time, their money to get into that. But I will say that we cannot have that in our community if we want to make safety a priority. We need to be safe. There were no gang members there. There were no criminals there. There was nobody there with a gun. They came because the restaurant had issues. So we're restaurant reporting, but we're going to go arrest the people in the restaurant. That has got to stop. We are a safe and welcoming community. We are Johnson County. We have empathy and love our neighbors. The rest of y'all can go away. Thank you, Johnson County.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll move to our in-person public commentators. We'll start with Ben Hobart today.
Chairman Kelly and Commissioners, my comments relate to your recent approval of a 5.5 million toilet travesty, the recapture of rainwater for toilets, which is a complete waste of money. Please recall that Mr. Barron originally asserted that this system had the potential to recapture 2 million gallons of water a year. In response to my recent core request, I received a copy of the most recent consultant's evaluation of the proposed system. Now, the projected recapture amount is only 232,000 gallons a year. I believe even that is overstated. However, let's use your consultant's estimate. So with a potential of 2 million gallons of recapture, which was an absolute fantasy, the county's payback period was 35 years. Now, the recapture of only 232,000 gallons is about one-ninth of the amount. Let's do the math. Thirty-five times nine equals 315 years for your payback period. Yet, this board has not reversed its decision to waste this money. Entering into budget season, this decision should cause every citizen to be disgusted, disenfranchised, you name it. If this board embraces this waste in the light of day, think how much waste is buried in this year's budget proposal. Commissioner Angelic, I know you're here by Zoom. You've always said, "Show me where we waste tax dollars." Can you see the waste now? Thank you.
Next is Brian Perkins.
Brian Perkins here, currently residing in Alata, Kansas, and I'm homeless. Each week, I try to come up with a topic I want to talk about and express, and it's hard. We have two minutes, and it's crunch time, and it feels rushed. So today, I've been going back and forth on this all week, and the topic of the funds, the money. We don't have the money. It's hard to come up with the money. It's hard to find land, all of these things, and I can't help but to just think and tell you guys, if we wouldn't be having this discussion right now, I wouldn't be here telling you about stories about vulnerabilities that we, experiences we went through. We wouldn't be here, 1020 wouldn't be having to be threatened with penalties and fines and different things for being over capacity if the funds were allocated earlier on in this crisis, before it was a known crisis, before it grew to this point. What are we going to do? Now, we're playing catch-up. People are losing their lives. People are losing their hope. Some have lost their hope. Some have lost their faith. This is all some people know now, and they're used to that, and that's not okay. So how do we properly catch up? How do we properly fix this solution to this known crisis? Because it is going to continue to grow, and we've got to play catch-up because we're in a pretty deep hole right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have it on our list here, I'm sorry I didn't make it on technology, is Galene Van Horn.
Chairman, Commissioners, great concerns about the four-cent sales tax. At the Committee of the Hall on May 1, 2025, Commissioner Hanslick, and I quote, "Comparing the renewal of the public safety sales tax and the health and safety sales tax, do we have a sense of how using either of these tools to help fund services that are mentioned would, for lack of a better term, free up funding for other departments so that it wouldn't necessarily be that these departments would expand unless they need to? But how do we know the full impact of these potential revenues?" The response from Deputy County Manager Julie Karins, and I quote, "For public safety tax renewal," to use that as an example, "we anticipate it would collect 35 million per year. We know that these revenues can be used to support, but to your point, they would be programmed as part of our budget process." So I think one of the Commissioners last week said, "If this were to be brought to the voters and they were to pass it, and we were to extend the current tax, we would be next year at this same time programming for 2027 budget, having those resources that allow us to put together and present to the Board's manager budget." That would be balancing the needs throughout the entire organization, and it would not just be there to support the unmet needs and expansion. Perhaps in these programs, but say the Department of Aging, Health, and Environment needed some resource, we were able to look at these revenues. So this becomes an interesting fund that could be used anywhere, and this is considered transparency. Constituents deserve fiscal discipline, responsible governments, and policies that prioritize residents and taxpayers, not political theater and runaway spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Phil Bauer.
Hi, I'm Phil Bauer. I live in Leewood in the 1st District. Show me where we waste tax dollars. Thank you, Mr. Hobart, for mentioning Commissioner Hanslick's comment there. I've shown you how you can save county taxpayers $34 million that are in the 2026 budget, $33 million to tear down the Corinth Library. Instead, spend $1 million to renovate it, $1.4 million to subsidize outside agencies. All the services they provide are available elsewhere. Let's give this money back to taxpayers. $407,000 in the Health and Human Services budget. The department expects costs to increase by $1.15 million, but they budgeted $1.55 million increase. Let's budget for the expected cost increase and save the extra $400,000. Those were my original saving recommendations, but here's how you can save another $1 million planned for 2026, but not in the budget. The half-a-billion-dollar sales tax, special election in March via mail-in ballot. It was stated in this meeting last week, it don't cost the county $950,000 to conduct that election. That's almost $1 million. Instead, if you insist on pursuing this half-a-billion-dollar sales tax, conduct the vote in the August primary, where it's simply another item on the ballot. I know you're going to say, "That's too late for the budget cycle," but there's a simple fix to that. Just create two versions of the budget. It happens a lot in the real world. One that includes the sales tax revenue, one that doesn't. It's that simple. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Pam Randolph.
I'm Pam Randolph. I'm actually from Colorado, but I've been in Kansas for six months, and I gotta say, it's taken a toll on everybody out here, all the, everybody from the 1020. There's been nights that some of us can't sleep. We wake somebody up by snoring, being in and out of the heat and cool air. It's taken a toll on every one of us, and it's not good. And it's going to be hot days again. So what are we supposed to do? Apparently, nothing but survive the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlotte O'Hara.
Charlotte O'Hara, Johnson County. I stand before you again with this overview of books that are in our school libraries and public libraries that I cannot read from because it would violate the, your ban on profanity during public comments. So I ask, of what value are these books to our children, that they are available to them in our public libraries and in our schools? I know that you're not going to answer, but as Diedrich Bonhoeffer said, "Not to speak is to speak; not to act is to act." The other thing that I want to talk about is the consultant that you hired to help you with redistricting, which I'm sure that our staff was quite capable of doing, and this cost us $71,000, including expenses. And I want to read from the consultant's website, haystack. "We pioneered the use of predictive analytics in political campaigns and was helping the Sanders and Obama campaigns make history." And there's no politics at the local level government? Really? Obama and Sanders campaigns, if the shoe had been on the other foot and a consultant had any connection with the Republican presidential election, it would have been all over the media. Thank you for your attention.
Next is Donald Stott.
I'm Donald Stott from Overland Park. As you know, a vote will be upcoming in the future Public Safety Sales Tax, and it will not address two critical issues: affordable housing in Johnson County and help for the homeless. It is disappointing that the public will not get a chance to vote on these critical issues affecting the lives of many Johnson County citizens. You know, it is my hope that something can be done soon to affect change in these areas. It will be a major focus for me to inform voters that the current vote for the Public Safety Sales Tax does nothing on the aforementioned items. Let's work for even a better Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's all the registered public commentators that we have for today in this general public comment session, and there's no notes for the record, so we'll move on at this time to the business session. There's a consent agenda, but I understand there's a request to remove some items from the consent agenda. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes. Items, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Items 2 through 9, please.
Yes. So 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Leaving one item on our consent agenda. So at this time, I'd ask if there's a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended. Commissioner Myers?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. I would make that a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written, excluding items 2 through 9.
Allen Brand, 2nd.
Moved by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. I ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. So we'll start with item number 2 here, which is Resolution Number 098-25, which is appointing Tanya Blue to the Museum Advisory Council. Commissioner Ashcraft, a reason this was removed from the consent agenda?
Several reasons, Mr. Chairman, but primarily, I want to recognize the service of Julie Hicks, who has served on that board for a number of years. She had done an outstanding job, although this is not a reorganization appointment. This is a replacement by Tanya Blue. Tanya has an extensive history in volunteer service and a keen interest in the history of Johnson County, so I am happy to appoint her.
All right. Do you want to make a motion, then?
I will be glad to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution Number 098-25, appointing the 5th District nominee, Tanya Blue, to the Museum Advisory Council.
Myers, 2nd.
Moved by Commissioner Ashcraft and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven in favor, nine against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Okay. We'll move on then to item number 3, which is Resolution Number 099-25, accepting the resignation of Daryl Dugan as trustee of Aubrey Township, declaring a vacancy and appointing Stephen Miller as the 3rd District nominee for the trustee of Aubrey Township. Commissioner Ashcraft, you took this off the consent agenda. Do you have questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering, though, if we might talk about item 3 and 6 together. They are a little bit unusual. These are not ordinary board appointments, and I was just wondering what the process was to appoint elected officials, if that could be shared.
Well, I defer at this time to Commissioner Brewer, this being the 3rd District, and her having worked on this matter. Commissioner Brewer?
Certainly. Commissioner Ashcraft, when, I'm going to speak directly to item number 3, as I was involved in that, when I was alerted that Mr. Dugan had sent in writing, he was a write-in candidate for the trustee in the last election cycle. He-- He declined to serve in that position. That opens up a vacancy in an elected position where you need to appoint somebody to the unexpired term. I chose to reach out to Aubrey Township area and their communication platforms, which is the Stillwell Community Organization, their website, and they have an email blast of over 2,000 folks in that Aubrey Township area. And I posted three vacancies that were occurring that impacted residents, that residents in that part of our community would be eligible for. That would be the trustee position. You'll be seeing, coming in a future meeting, the clerk position for the Aubrey Township, and then I had a vacancy on the East Zoning Board that was required to have somebody out of the unincorporated area for that. So I chose to make a wide communication to get as many folks who were interested as possible. We had best response for the zoning board, a little bit skinnier response for the trustee and clerk position. Under advisement of, looking at statute of how you replace this, I reviewed, and I put forward my nominee, and that's what you're seeing today.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brewer. That scratched the itch.
For number 3, and I just mentioned number 6 is similar, but that is in District 6 rather than District 3. I'm assuming that it's the same process and intent.
Yep.
I'm happy to make a motion for 3.
Why don't you go ahead?
All right. "I move the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution Number 099-25, accepting the resignation of Darrell Dugan as trustee of Aubrey Township." And I would note that Aubrey, for the motion, just to remove the E. Township declaring a vacancy and appointing the 3rd District nominee, Stephen Brad Miller, as trustee of Aubrey Township.
Myers, 2nd.
Moved by Commissioner Brewer, seconded by Commissioner Myers. Not seeing further discussion, will the clerk, please, call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye. Seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
All right. Very good. We'll move on at this time to Resolution Number 100-25, which is the 6th District nominee, Jason Wright, to the Contractor Licensing Review Board. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar question for 4, 5, 7, 8, and 9. Are these all reorganization reassignments, or are these, does this include new appointments?
Well, Commissioner Ashcraft, you know that before you see these on the consent agenda pursuant to Article 11, Section 1B7, which they shall be placed on the consent agenda, that's the rules that we agreed to, you receive these in your email along with the application, so this information is in your possession. I wonder why we're spending our time here today asking either the legal counsel or the commissioners about these appointments.
Well, thank you for your question, Mr. Chairman, and while commissioners were able to see this privately, this has not been disclosed publicly, and I wanted to make sure that it was made aware to the public since we no longer are putting these on consent review at the prior meeting, and that is the reason for doing that.
And as part of the agenda, these are made public. Everybody has access to this information, and this is the process that we agreed to as commissioners. I just wonder why we are diverting from it each week.
As I have indicated, Mr. Chairman, I believe that it is better form to put this on agenda review, but I acknowledge that is not the rules of order. Consequently, I am exercising my right as a commissioner to pull from the consent agenda to have disclosure and conversation and clarification as needed.
Though it's not needed and there is no conversation, other than this conversation, there's been no and continues to be no substantive conversation regarding these nominees. I'll just note that for the record. Commissioner Allen Brand, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to address number 6.
We're on number 4.
Okay. I thought he pulled them all together. Sorry.
They're all pulled. We'll go, we'll get to 6. We're on 4 right now.
Okay.
Commissioner Brewer?
Just a general comment, and, you know, I don't know if we can find a compromise resolution, but I think that would actually have us opening up those rules of order that we did pass by a majority vote, but I just want to be able to take residents through the process. We have about 31, 32 boards, councils, and commissions that we do appointments to. Those appointments are made either because someone's term has expired. In the case of last year and a half, there's been a reorganization of bylaws and rules that just opened up everybody to either be somebody new appointed, somebody reappointed. So three reasons for appointment is I've got, I've got a vacancy in that I'm responsible to fill, I've got a term that has expired, or for whatever reason, I need to do an appointment in a mid-cycle. The process is we open that up for nominations. There's a variety of ways that we get nominees. We ask staff what they need as far as what types, and certain of our appointments have to fit certain expertise. For instance, I have to have, for one area, I have to appoint somebody who's a master electrician. For another area, I have to appoint somebody who has, who runs a mental health organization, private or nonprofit. So you have to fit within those requirements. Once we do have a vetted candidate that we can nominate, that nominee goes before all seven members of the commission for a 10-day posting period. We do that in case there's something that we were unaware about the nominee that would not make them eligible, and we try to do it in a process that is respectful of a resident's volunteer willingness to volunteer to serve on a commission board or council, and do it in a way that I'm not bringing for a nominee that then gets debated at a public dais of whether or not they're fit for service. So we do that posting. I've appreciated being fully vetted, being fully informed before I see on the agenda whom my fellow commissioners are nominating, and being able to review the applications for nomination so that we can have an efficient process when we come to make a public vote. Whether or not it's on the agenda review, that's not really, I'm good either way, but I just want folks to understand that there's a very deliberate process of how we even get to the point of having a nomination, a nominee come before the body for action, and that it includes a 10-day viewing period by all commissioners so that we have the ability to know who's being nominated, who we're voting on, and have any discussions if there is a concern before it comes before public vote. That in no way, that way also protects a resident from any way damaging their reputation in this process, and that would create a chilling effect of any resident wanting to serve on a board, council, or commission if we were debating their candidacy, right, in a public meeting. So just wanted to share those comments of how I approach that process.
Commissioner Brewer, I appreciate the comprehensive review of the process. I think we did this last week, and I think the idea is that we don't do this every week. We've had the meeting where we set the rules, and we discussed how the appointment process would go into place. And the reason that I supported the rules and why, I believe six of us did, was because we value the time and the resource of having this meeting and want to utilize it for the fundamental and comprehensive substantive purposes. There's a lot of talent in the room, and we want this talent to be best used in the interest of Johnson County. And so I appreciate the summary. I believe Commissioner Hanslick's got her hand up as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to add my frustration, express my frustration with the continuing process of pulling things off of the consent agenda that we have previously, as a board, agreed to the process. It always is a challenge to decide what items the public should have, the opportunity to have a full vetting in front of the board, and what other processes are more administrative. And...